Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, July 15th, 2019 Board of Selectmen's meeting. This is a special Town, uh, special Board of Selectmen's meeting. I'll read the agenda. At 7:30, we'll have citizens input. At 7:35, we're gonna interview the finalists for the Finance Director, Town Accountant, George Samia. And at 8:20, maybe a little sooner, we'll discuss the finalists for the Director of Accounting, Marie Anne Almat-
Almodova.
Say it for me.
Almodova.
Almodova. Thank you, Marie. Open it up for citizens input?
Pledge.
Oh, sorry. Pledge of allegiance. No. Sorry about that. Amanda, you wanna start us off?
Sure.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dave. Now, we'll open it up, citizens input.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Allison Bancroft, from 22 Market Street. Thank you for hearing me today. I came a couple of months ago to discuss the proposed residential development on Market and Rock Hill Street. Since the developer will be with before you next Tuesday to start the process of the municipal conversion permit, I wanted to give you an update. At the final meeting before the Board of Selectmen chose King as the developer, the developer's representatives told the board that its proposal conforms to all aspects of local zoning, and it was very confident that its plan would be shown to be in compliance. I've been attending the board, the planning board meetings on the project. It turns out that the conceptual plan for the residential building is the actual plan, with only minimal changes on the roofline. When asked about presenting the same plan, which doesn't conform to the town bylaws, even though they said it would, King's representative clarified that what he meant was that after he asked the town to waive all of its requirements, as far as the bylaws and setbacks, and grants him special permits, then it would be in compliance with all of the town's requirements. The town bylaws call for a building with 10-foot setbacks on the front, back, and side. The development proposed is set 10 feet from the street. The corner of the building proposed on the Market and Rock Hill Street is only 2 feet from the street. The town requirements for buildings in the overlay district require a maximum of 3 and 1/2 stories, and this proposed building is 4 stories. The height requirement is 40 feet, and the height given by the developers here is almost 45 feet to the roof, not to the highest point of the building. To the selectmen who met with me and told me they didn't think the developer would be requesting any waivers, the information was incorrect. And to the selectmen who told me that the developer would be listening to neighbors, your information was mistaken as well. The developer has articulated to the planning board that it is looking at the buildings on the Common only. It is completely and wholly ignoring the fact that the residential building is on the corner of two residential streets, and its building is not compatible in terms of scale, height, architectural style, or compatibility with the abutting neighborhood. You will soon be asked to give a municipal conversion permit to finalize the sale of the property. The intent of the municipal conversion permit and the zoning regulations is to administer the conversion of the municipally-owned property in a manner that will be in harmony with the intent of the bylaws, and that will ensure the integrity of the abutting neighborhoods. This King's proposed development does neither of those things. Mr. King is working in his own best interest to build the largest project he can in the small space that he has. He's made it clear that the abutting residential neighbors are not a consideration to him, even though this residential building abuts two residential streets. It's the town's responsibility to ensure that the buildings are not built 2 feet from a busy corner, where people will not be able to see cars, pedestrians, or kids on bikes turning the corners until the car is literally upon them. It's a safety issue. It's the town's responsibility to ensure that the scale of new buildings are compatible with the character of the neighborhood. It's ultimately your responsibility that you sell this parcel to a developer that can fulfill the downtown vision for this town. Mixed use is great. It's what we all want. An apartment building is great. We all want more people living in the center of Foxborough. There is no requirement, though, that the town relax its, even further, it's already more lenient bylaws that have already been enacted for this overlay district. Townspeople in the hundreds have signed a petition that they don't want an oversized apartment complex larger than all the other commercial and residential buildings on the Common. A smaller apartment building, in addition to the apartments building being built on the restaurant, is more than sufficient to achieve the density sought in this tiny corner of the Common. I will be opposing the grant of the municipal conversion permit to a developer who isn't willing to work with townspeople to ensure a building that fits in with what we, as a town, are looking for. This developer is proposing a residential unit that's not compatible with the scale, character, and architecture of Foxborough's rural and historic patterns. You, as elected officials, should decline the grant of the municipal conversion permit when it becomes before you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else for citizens input? Seeing none. We'll talk about the finalists for the Finance Director, Town Accountant.
I'll sort of slide it over to you, Mike, to maybe make a presentation, how the process went, how we got to where we're at, and go from there.
Sure. So, we did advertise initially out through government professional organizations, as well as out commercially. We had over 90 applicants for this position. We formed a screening committee to go through the resumes and cover letters with a member of your board, Leah, representing, and, as well as a member of the School Committee, Bill Yuckna, and a former Finance Director and a consultant to us pro bono for, you know, many years, Todd Hassett. We brought those down to a manageable number of people, applicants, to bring before the committee. We had eight members on the interview committee. We interviewed right here. And before you is George Samia, who is the unanimous recommendation of that eight-member panel from the interviews. So, I'd like to introduce George Samia as our recommendation for you to meet.
Yeah, come on up. Have a seat. Welcome. I guess Leah knows everything there is to know about you, but maybe talk a little bit to the rest of us. We've read your resume and-
To put it quickly, I'll say the same thing I said to the committee. There is, there's some info on there, I guess resume etiquette being what it is, that if you've been someplace for over 20 years, 30 years, nobody cares that you maybe mowed lawns when you were in high school or anything like that. But I had, I was also a town accountant, and there's a number of places. I worked for five towns earlier in my career in different spots when I came out. So, I have approximately 15 years as a town accountant. And then, when I got to the town of East Bridgewater, I was the town accountant for them. It was 13 of those 15 years. And then, there was an opening for town manager, administrator, I should say. And I spent approximately 19 there as the town administrator slash financial director, et cetera. If that gives you a little idea of it.
19 years as a-
Yes. In total, I was pushing three decades with East Bridgewater. And both accountant and town administrator.
Right. Wow. Anybody have any questions on the board?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, obviously, you've been in East Bridgewater a long time. During your interview process, did you do any background work on town of Foxborough, look at any of the audited financials for past years?
I had, I brought with me a number of different things. There's a thing called a dashboard, a municipal dashboard.
Vision of local services.
And there's, one of my favorites is they have the at-a-glance reports that they have for the state. So, I had a little bit, I mean, I'm not gonna say I'm totally up on where you are, but I have a good idea of where you are as opposed to what I've been working with for the last, you know, 20, 30 years.
Have you had a chance to review the town's financial policies that were adopted in 2016?
No, not necessarily on the, I know in talking or in speaking, with certain things have come out, that you do have a capital plan, and that, as we spoke just a little while ago, that you've devoted certain amounts of money to things like paying down your OPEB liabilities and stuff, all of which are good, nice, solid financial pieces that will keep the town going for some time.
One of the characteristics of our former Finance Director was he was very good at forecasting and doing some modeling to, you know, plan for the future. Have you done that in East Bridgewater, and what type of forecasting and modeling have you done?
Well, I'll say this. One of the things that, when people talk about forecasting, they usually talk in terms of five-year periods and what have you. I personally created a capital plan for the town of East Bridgewater, in which we had to have five years' worth of the payments on any one of the capital items that we were putting out. And to make a long story short, because I could probably talk on that for an hour, what it had is almost a self-adjusting governor on it, in that if you didn't have the money to make the next five years, you'd have to kind of put on the brakes, because you didn't have what you needed to keep yourself going. It also, if there was something new that came in and we had the free cash, that would say, okay, we're good again for another few years. So, it kept itself in balance, and it also kept that five-year cushion for the town, so that if- The town of East Bridgewater is a lot different from the town of Foxborough, in that it was primarily feeding off of a residential tax base, with the state aid coming in, and very, very little local receipts. It was basically a bedroom community. There was no, there's really nothing in East Bridgewater, a few antique stores and things like that. So, essentially, it kept the town, we were much more, how do I wanna say it? We were more vulnerable to moves at the State House than perhaps Foxborough would be, because you seemed to have a little bit more of an independent revenue source besides the state aid. So, this particular capital plan kept us from these shifts where they pulled the rug out from our year, and now you're just left, what do we do? How are we gonna make the payments this year? And it kept us going that way.
So, I read in your resume, you've had 13 balanced budgets, 23 annual balanced budgets.
Over my tenure with them, yeah.
Last 10 years. During that period, how did you manage, obviously, fixed cost increases? Did you balance it out with slow and steady property tax increases? Because you do rely mostly on property taxes as, you know, for your revenue.
Well, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
In Foxborough, it's a little different. 57, I think it's 57% of our revenue is generated through property taxes, very little from state aids, less than 10%, although 19% of our revenue is generated through local receipts. So, we're, we rely heavily on local receipts. But we get hurt on the state aid side, particularly with the charter schools, with the charter school assessment that really, you know, it's $2.4 million fiscal '18, that takes away from, you know, the public school side. So, my point is, how did you, how did you manage to maintain a balanced budget without overtaxing the residents in East Bridgewater?
Well, prob-
What had, what suffered?
Say again.
What suffered? What couldn't you do that you think, from a fiscal management side, would have been prudent for the long term, but you just didn't have the resources to do it?
Well, as always, there's always pressure in any town. It's usually the budget pressure. I try to segregate capital projects and those types of things, aside from the, from the operating budget. So, of course, it's always the operating budget. We want more, we want more, we want more. The situation is, is that if you come out of the gate and you say, what are the revenues coming in? And really wasn't that hard to calculate them out. East Bridgewater, it was the 2 and 1/2% that you'd get off of, you know, the proposition, 2 and 1/2, your new growth. And then, our local receipts were pretty much flat. And then, when it came down to the state aid, it really didn't have, I mean, we sort of got nailed on the state aid a few years back. So, we never went out much over $50,000 to $100,000 that we would predict was coming in. So, based on that, this is the money we've got to work with, now let's back the budget into that. And then, you know, if there was something that was hurting a little bit more, then something else, we'd try to move the revenue into that area. But the town was not up for, they did do an override, it was a debt exclusion override for a $77 million school. And that was pretty much the end of the line for the, the town was not built demographically to handle a heck of a lot more in that area. So, it's, that was, usually the bone of contention was, gee, there were some people, we just wanna keep spending more and more and more. Okay, but the only place you're gonna get it is if we do an override. And if not, we have to stay within these guidelines. And that was where the train would usually start derailing, because, you know, I just want, I want it. That's all there is to it.
And how many overrides have you had in East Bridgewater?
Mostly debt exclusion overrides. There was one for this school, and then about 12 to 13 years earlier, there was another one to renovate a middle school for about half the cost of this one. And that was it. We did do a green filtration plant, but that was run out of, out of a, an enterprise fund for water, water treatment. So, we've only had these two, and I wouldn't even describe them as a operational override, they were debt exclusion overrides. With, at least there was a life and an ending to them.
And then, the last question, because I'm sure it's public information, and it'll come out at some point, just talk about your, without, you don't have to get into details, but, you know, the separation with the town. I mean, was it, was it amicable? Was it kind of contentious, or?
No, actually, I'm still drawing paychecks. I, you know, negotiated with the Board of Selectmen.
So, they just opted not to renew your contract?
Pretty much. It came down to what I described, I won't, like you say, I won't go into, but sometimes when you, especially if you've spent decades in one spot, the place that you came to when you started is no longer that place. And ultimately, as I told the other committee before, there's a, there's a shelf life to a town administrator slash town manager. They usually run five to seven years, and I mean, that doesn't, you can't, you can't make it, but if you-
Like six year right now.
But you, I mean, if you notice, there's a lot of move around, and either they'll jump to another town. So, I look at it, and I say that, you know, I had 30-year run there, and almost 20 as the town administrator. And then, at one point, it just, it was like, this isn't, you had people on the board who were diametrically opposed to what you're doing, and it didn't work for me, and it wouldn't work for the town, so we just parted ways. And I think that would be the best way to go with it.
And then, just one more question.
Sure.
You had a very good rating with Hooties?
Yes.
Okay.
Not as good as yours, but good for the size town, whatever.
You know, our financial rating is based entirely based on our financial policies and our strict adherence to those financial policies. And I think we'd be foolish to veer away from those financial policies, regardless of who the Director of Finance is. And I'm just asking for your commitment to adhere to those financial policies, and if we can, if we can improve them, because obviously, it's a, it's a working document, and things change, we would welcome some suggestions, but we're looking for strict adherence to those financial policies to maintain the path that we set on, because, you know, we're a great, great place for paying down our OPEB liability by 2038.
I was stunned how much you, you've done way more than I had even anticipated. So, that's, that's great.
We have, we have a very good free cash position. We just allocated $4 million of cash towards our borough school project. That's a direct return to the taxpayers. So, we wanna make sure that we forecast properly three, five years down the road, and we build to those forecasted models, and we stay the steady course that we've established.
There seems to be a move on, in this particular day that we're in, or, you know, or era that we're in, where it seems to be changed for the sake of change, like, you know, that's all you have, we gotta change this, you know, we'll change it to do what? I don't know, but it's gotta be changed, because we just gotta change it. That's not my style. I usually get my feet wet, weighed in, find out what it is, and then, if it's working, I'm not the guy that sticks my head under the hood of the car and starts messing with the carburetor when you've already got the engine running, and then the next thing you know, it's skipping. So, I mean, I think if you've got, I mean, looking at it, you got a triple-A credit rate, and we had a double-A 3, which, for the size town, was about as good as we were gonna get. One of the things I did mention is, a lot of it, I'm assuming, all right, you're using Standard and Poor's, and you're talking, Cindy McInerney, who was first Southwest, I used to work with her all the time. So, this, the philosophy seems to be there between what you folks have already done. I don't, I didn't really see when I was like looking over, what is, boy, is this town messed up? They need to have everything fixed, and we need to change it. It looks like you're running pretty good, right, at this moment? No, no, that's not, that doesn't mean we can't, you know, you don't try to, you know, fix, you know, work with things, but I mean, I don't think that I see a horrible situation.
But, you know, everything's fluid, everything's a work in progress. If we can, if we can save more, obviously, we wanna save more, we wanna put money away, we wanna, you know, keep our stabilization funds well-funded, but that's where the financial policies take place, because there's certain commitments to those accounts that we have to do every year. And as long as we stick to that, we'll be in very good shape in the long run.
I think also, maybe, you know, and again, without trying to put words into the, I'm getting the feel or the vibe that there's a group effort here financially, which is much more conducive from where I sit to a good operation than in, where I was, I always go back and use analogies off of TV, but it used to be like when, you know, the Three Stooges would go to the army, and they'd say, we need a volunteer, and everybody would take two steps back and leave Curly standing out in the front. Well, out there, the issue was, we had, you know, finances, and I mentioned to Bill and everyone when we went in, we had a nice finance committee when I came in in 1991, 92, and it was all group effort, and we had people on the Board of Selectmen that knew all about it. And slowly but surely, they all dropped off, and it was kind of me just doing the whole thing by myself. And that might sound to some of my brethren like, you know, that's great, because you're the guy in charge, but, you know, it all came down, always, you know, well, he's the guy that doesn't wanna give the kids the money for the schools, or whatever it is, you know, you became the traffic cop. I might, I work better in a group setting than I do as a, as a one-man band.
Okay. I don't think I fast enough. No, keep going, Dave. Chris?
Yeah. So, for the last, you said 15 years, you were the town administrator and the Finance Director?
Yeah. I mean, I never really lost, I mean, I don't have that, I never had the official title, but I was the guy doing all the finances.
Okay. How big was your accounting department and?
Accounting Department had two people in it. The Treasury had four, along with the Treasurer. We had an assessing department that had a chief assessor and three, three individuals that would work with her.
Okay. So, you were in charge of all of the financial stuff and all of the town admin stuff?
Yes.
How much of your time during the course of the week or so would be, how would you split your time?
I'm gonna say a large portion of it, okay? More than 50% would be devoted to the financial aspects of the town, because the whole budget was put together by me. Now, when I say that, I'm not telling you I didn't get any, the input from the accountant and the Treasurer, they were, I was very proud of the team that I had put together. But, but it was right down to the warrant, and everything was all typed up on my machine, the whole thing was done. I even had cheat sheets for the town moderator to use when he would go up to the-
With the longevity that you had there, your team that you just spoke about, same thing, had your team been together for a while, or?
I'm gonna say the most recent incarnation we had, they were about six to seven years, the group of them. One has gone on now to another, another town to become the Finance Director. I mentioned that I pirated her away from the town auditors. I knew that she was, they actually, they gave their blessing with it, but she was becoming a mother, and she couldn't stay with the, I said, well, there's my Treasurer. And she, she came in, and I mean, I, tough to beat her. She was really good, a really good Treasurer. I had a town accountant that had some 35 years' worth of experience under a belt. And again, in an era, it's hard, and I know that we have a good one coming here, but it's hard to find people. The invisible end of, of the finances is becoming a harder and harder situation, where you have people that understand it. It's almost becoming a lost art, if you will, and it's hard to find it. So, I, if you can find a group of people, try to hang on to them, but, you know.
Okay. If you had to pick your management style, what would it be?
I usually take, I get, as I said, groups of people together. I've never found anybody or a situation where all good things flow from one particular person. They might think that it flows from them, but usually, I bring together people who have knowledge in certain areas, that would be your, your auditors for one. I always had a great relationship with the auditors. I don't look at them as the enemy. I look at them as a source. What are we doing wrong here? I mean, what would you do to fix this? I used first Southwest. Cindy McInerney, and I mean, I don't know whether you guys know the name, but she's the lead. You go to most of your MMA meetings and stuff, she's usually one of the key speakers on bonding and what have you. Perfect resource. Use the town's attorneys. You bring in your accountant, your Treasurer, your assessors. If you've got a decent team around you, you'll get the answers. Somebody will come up and give you the thing. If you think you're gonna do it all by yourself, forget it, it can't be done.
Good. Any other questions?
I think Foxborough has done well in the last decade. However, it was very obvious at town meeting this year, there was a pretty substantial pushback, to some extent, people being, listening to the advisory board on some issues, that resulted in a couple of floor fights about spending issues. And as a result, some portion of our budget wasn't appropriated, you know, which is gonna create problems potentially down the road. I think this board has some potential solutions. But as much as we seem to have good times in terms of finances, there is a portion of our population that consistent, ongoing tax increases are much more difficult for that group to have. So, I don't think we'll probably reach the level this coming spring that perhaps you had to face this past spring with the budget in East Bridgewater. But there, I think, are gonna be some- budget in East Bridgewater. But there, I think, going to be some changes in the way we do the next fiscal budget. And I think we'll probably be starting it a lot earlier in just a process thing between this board, the school committee, the town management, and whoever our finance director is going to be, to come up with a game plan, you know, to be more aware of it. And we're looking for somebody that's experienced, but has a skill set to work with diverse people and diverse concerns and head issues that they want to see funded. You feel you have the capability to adapt to a new situation, a new community, and provide a high level of service.
I think one of the things that I've gleaned out of speaking in all these, the various forums that we've been in here is I've been somewhat laughing about it because the situation you folks seem to be having is a sort of a pullback. Let's, let's slow down. We don't want to spend. We don't want to spend, which is the absolute inverse of what I've been dealing with for the last 30 years. I think that this is probably slightly more conducive because I tend to be a bit more conservative in the way I, I approach rather than just simply, there's some money, let's spend it. So I, I think it probably would be a little more comfortable a setting for myself here because I don't tend to be the guy that's like, like spend for the sake of spending. Now, that doesn't mean if there's a, a needed project that we can't work our way around it altogether and come up with solutions on how to, how to finance it without putting the town in jeopardy. But I certainly have a better feel for this than maybe what I've had to deal with in the past, which is usually diametrically opposed to where I am.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, I know you were on the committee.
Yeah. I mean, I was on the committee. I think you answered most of the questions that I had. But you know, going home that day after we spent six hours interviewing and putting my head on the pillow, it was very clear to me that George was the top candidate and a great match for this community.
Thank you.
I mean, even his, his cover letter to his thank you note after his interview wasn't just thank you for your interview. It was, here's what I want to do on day one. And when I hit the ground running, I mean, it's clear that he's forward thinking. It's clear that he's very thoughtful, you know, that he's professional, that he has this background that we're looking for. And, you know, even in my kind of snooping around and asking people connected to the community, everyone had something positive to say about George.
Thank you.
So, you know, it's clear that you had a very successful career over there. And, you know, I'm, I'm, I feel lucky and fortunate for you to continue your career here with Foxborough.
Thank you.
You know, just to touch on a little bit of what, what Ed was, or continue with what Ed was discussing and that's, you know, where we're going forward with, with our various team members and our budget for next year. And I think it was pretty clear that we needed to start a little bit earlier. And for us, that means August, which means for you, that's a few weeks away.
Yeah.
You know, I, I know we're putting a little bit of pressure on you, you know, semi come up to speed. Although the first couple of meetings are just going to try to be, get us all on the same page. For us, you may have had a finance committee. We have an advisory committee here in Foxborough and sitting down with the advisory committee, maybe even the school committee that probably sometime late in, in August this year to just come up with a game plan.
The earlier, really, the better. I mean, we, in, in East Bridgewater, everybody would roll their eyes. Oh, you know, what are we starting now for? We've got all the way up and, and, you know, the longer you're talking about it, you clear out the potential issues. I know sometimes it takes a while for the state to get its act together with, you know, giving you the cherry sheet numbers and what have you. But I think, again, that goes back to the argument that we had, or not argument, but the, the, the thing I mentioned earlier where, where I don't think you're as dependent on every little blip that the, the state pulls one way or the other and gives you some. But earlier is better. And it's, you know.
I think it would be great for you to sit down and hear what advisory has to say in August, what we have to say and.
Sure.
And that was really just another benefit too. I mean, anyone else that we talked to really needed a month or two at the end of the year, you know, to do the right thing and kind of finish up and just the stars aligning to George, you know, being able to get started right away just makes me more comfortable too.
Awesome. Any other questions?
Mike, just a little bit on the process. I know you said you had 90 applicants. How many did you actually bring in for in-person interviews? And what was the overall makeup?
So we came to a, we came to a, a pool of 12 and we had six that we were bringing in on the first day. And then if need be, we're going to go to the second pool of six. And by the time we got to that, of, of our first pool of six, one had taken a position elsewhere before we got to those interviews. So we came in with five. And out of that, we were very pleased with where we were and didn't feel the need to, to go back to our, to our A minus group where we'd already met with our A plus group. So that was the process. The, the makeup, we had, we didn't have a lot of folks who had had a career in municipal finance like George has. We had some. We had some folks with, with some auditing or accounting, you know, background. We had a lot of candidates or a lot of applicants from, from corporate, the corporate world. And there were in, I sent rejection letters out on a continual basis to over 60% right away because people just weren't qualified. You know, when you hit some of the commercial, you know, tools that are out there to, to recruit people, you get stuff from all over the world and from all walks of life. And so when it came down to the serious applicants, we were down to a dozen. And like I said, more of those than not were from the corporate world. And we were open to corporate applicants. I mean, Bill Yucina came from the, you know, from the corporate world. So did Randy. So did many of our successful, you know, people here. So we weren't scared of that. But it just happened that our most qualified person, we felt that were recommended to you, also had extensive municipal experience.
The entire interview panel unanimously?
That's correct. It was eight, eight in favor of, of George.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Bill is here tonight. So I don't know if you want to hear from him. I mean, he was, he was actually a participant in the process from the beginning. And if he may, if he just said a few words. I mean, I, I always welcome his input.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Especially, you know, I think Bill and Todd have the best, I really looked to them to what they thought. So I think it's great that he's here to make you hear from him.
Yeah. I think as Mike has said, we, we had an A plus group that we, we wanted to sit and talk to first. And in going through them, we saw some very big differences between the different candidates, some strengths that one would have over another and could bring to the table. But ironically, George was the last one we visited with that day. And George had everything. George pretty much had the, the whole package as far as the information. Obviously, I represent the school side. So I wanted to make sure that we would be bringing in a partner that understood that we worked as a team in this community. We don't have the school versus the town side. But George answered those, a lot of those questions the, the way I would hope somebody would answer them, realizing again that we would all share the same visions for the town itself. I really do think I, I did the same type of research that Leah did and got a lot of strong input on George being a, a very good candidate and having had a very successful tenure where he was. And, and it's very easy, you know, to dismiss that. But, you know, in George's commentary that, you know, things do change within communities and people sometimes want people to change. And, and again, I think if you're, you're consistent in what you do and you are holding your principles, you're not really willing to change to that degree. And I really saw that's where George came from. I think George has a lot to offer this community. I think, you know, hopefully with, you know, this replacement and the replacement for the town accountant, we can really start to move the town forward again. Again, we have the policies in place that are very well written. They can't be just ignored because they are required. They were voted by you and voted by the school committee and voted as a way that we're all going to operate. So I think George will, will hold those up. We made it very clear that it's a team as far as these guys go, but that again, if he has a voice, if it's different than what they're saying, that, that again, that needs to be worked out because we're not looking for three people who just think the same. We're looking for three people who raise the points and argue the points and make sure that the right decisions are made as we move forward for the community. So I, I really do think this is, this is a good move and I recommend that you do make this move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just one more thing that I was going to say, you know, I know it's not ideal to have two of these positions turn over at the same time. However, making the best of the situation that we're in, I think having them come in together, you know, and kind of start to work together and, and do that together is going to be a really positive thing. So as we reshape the department, I think this is, this is a good thing.
I think it's great that Marie was sitting back there throughout this process and hopefully George will stay. Spy on Marie for.
Hopefully Marie will still stay.
So what's the next step we have to do?
So if the, if the board is so inclined, what I would do is make a motion to, to offer a conditional offer of employment to the town, to, to Mr. Samia, subject to a negotiated, because he, this position does come with a contract. So we, then ask that the town manager sit down with, with George to negotiate a contract, which I will bring back to the board for, for final, final action and approval.
Everybody comfortable with that motion?
Yeah. What's the timeline?
I'm going to bring it to as early as next week. Because I think we need to move on this quickly and get it done.
And I think that there may be, maybe instead of a final contract, there may be things, you know, that David has or you have or that you would like to see different in this contract. So maybe just soliciting that feedback before we draft it so that it doesn't come up later in the process.
Yep.
Okay. Ed, you ready?
Yep.
Okay.
Am I making a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Make a motion what he said, right?
Yeah. Make a motion that the town manager develop a contract to offer it to the applicant for tonight's selection to George G. Samia? Did I pronounce?
Samia, yeah.
Second. Did I cover it, Bill?
Yeah. Just it's a conditional offer of employment, obviously subject to, so the final, final, final conditions.
Any further discussion? Polls in favor? Oppose? None?
Thank you. Thank you. Look forward to coming back within a week or two or whatever.
I'll be in touch quickly.
Yes, tomorrow.
Alrighty. Maria, come on up.
So similarly, we did a process. We didn't expect that we were going to be looking for a, for a new director of accountant, but we did go out and advertise that position. We, we did get really good response from that advertisement as well. We also went back since we already had all these finance directors, town accountants, as well as other, you know, corporate accountants that had applied. We went back and revisited those. And out of the, the top ones from the, from the applicants for the finance director job who we weren't bringing forward, I did reach out to, to several of them. And, and we really didn't turn over anybody new either. They were applying specifically for the finance director job and weren't interested. You know, they'd moved on or whatever. So, but we had a good pool of, of folks that applied. And we had, Bill and I met with town engineer, Chris Gallagher, as well as director of technology, Aaron Heire. And we, we went through the applications. We narrowed down the pool. We did phone interviews and then, and then we brought in candidates for final interviews. And we were fortunate that we came again with a hands down unanimous vote, seven to zero, to bring Marie Anne Elmodovar before you to recommend her for the new director of accounting.
Mr. Chairman, normally this wouldn't be the board's appointment, but given the circumstance on which you're, which you were at with no director of finance in place at this time, we're, we're bringing this appointment forward for your consideration tonight. So I, we'll, we'll talk about the process after this, but so they want to give you an opportunity to meet and talk with, with Marie.
All right, Marie, just like we did with George, tell us a little bit about yourself and, because I met you, but the other four board members had not yet.
Yes. So I currently work for the town of Concord, the assistant town accountant there. I started at Concord literally one week after I graduated college. It was supposed to be a temp position, which turned into, it was supposed to be two months, turned into six months. And they wanted to hire me and I've been there for about a and a half years. And I was fortunate enough that I've, I started in treasury and I moved up within treasury and now I'm on the accounting side. And seeing things from two different departments has helped me tremendously, as well as the town as well. You know, I'm, in my role right now, we have to make sure that records are accurate and I tend to pick up on little mistakes because of my experience in treasury, on the treasury side. And that's something that I will continue, you know, here in Foxborough. Anything else?
I, I was also fascinated during the interview about just some of the extra stuff you did in Concord, some of the, you know, programs you came up with and policies you came up with. And, you know, explain that to the board too, because I, I think it was outstanding.
Yes. So I, I'm a self learner. I, while I've been at Concord, I've learned six, seven different programs, two of them financial. And what I did recently is I, I, we have a training side to our financial system there. And I went through all the steps of how to create a payable, how to run the warrant, how to do the treasury side, the billing, treasury receipts, you name it. I went through everything step by step. And I basically created step by step guides that get handed out to new employees or even current employees. And I basically came up with a guide that anyone can come off the street and pick that guide up and they could run everything top to bottom.
So they never had a, a standard operating procedures in place before?
No.
It's quite an undertaking.
Yeah. What, what we had from the software provider was nine years old. Not useful.
Start with questions from the board?
I have some.
Let's start with Dave.
What, what experience do you have with the timing and the basics of the regulatory reporting requirements, the, the state department of revenue?
So I, well, currently I, I do Schedule A balance sheet, free cash. I, when I started in accounting, what had happened at the time is the town accountant there retired sort of last minute. So the assistant moved up, who's my current boss. And I was basically, you know, asked to come in and I was told, okay, we have to do Schedule A and the balance sheet. Here's what we did last year. Figure it out. And that's exactly what I did. Like I said earlier, I'm a self learner. You know, I, I've, I learn everything by just doing it. And I'm able to take what was done last year and, you know, just figure out what needs to get done. And I've, I've been doing both Schedule A and the balance sheet for four years now. This would be my fifth year. And I have not had the DR come back saying I did something wrong.
So basically what you're saying is you're fearless.
Do you have a relationship with anybody at Division of Local Services who you rely on for, for guidance?
Well, we have our, the rep assigned to us, Amy Handfield. She's very good. You know, whenever my boss and myself, whenever we have a question, we tend to go to the auditors. We go to Amy. Our finance director there is really good. You know, whenever we have any doubts, we're not afraid to, you know, ask for help. So we want to make sure we're doing the right thing.
Thank you. Chris?
No, I'm good.
Leah?
I was just going to say, so I didn't have any questions, but now Dave just gave me one. So being a self learner, you know, it, it kind of can be the type of personality that maybe keeps to yourself. How do you know when, or give me an example of a time that you said, you know what, I can't do this all by myself. I need to get help from someone. And how did you go about doing that? So if you can give me kind of a real life example. So if you can give me kind of a real-life example.
It was recently, actually. So in the accounting department at, over at Concord, so there's my boss, myself, and then we have an accounts payable person. We did have an utility clerk. For some, for a number of years, the utility billing and cash application, I mean, all of that was under accounting. And so we had a, an instance where the accounts payable person basically took over of the, the utility software responsibilities. We had a person that was there retired. And she was doing all of that. I had never been exposed to that. She unfortunately got sick. And I basically had to do the warrants, top to bottom. It was during Schedule A season. That, that had to get done. The billing had to get done. All the payments had to be applied. And my first instinct was like, oh, I, I can handle this. I could do it all. That's, at first, it was, I was able to manage everything, but then at some point I had to say, okay, you know, I can't. It's too much for me. So I actually, I, I was able to get help from, we have a light plan over at Concord. And there was a utility software coordinator there who was able to help me with, you know, the payments, you know, because it's a big town and we had stacks and stacks of checks that needed to get applied. So she helped me out with that. And, you know, that, that, you know, allowed me to be able to finish Schedule A on time, get the warrants done. And so, yeah.
All right, great. That's a great example. And thank you for coming in and doing a televised interview tonight. I know that's not normal and not easy, so.
My first one.
Ed? In the last nine months, there's been quite a bit of turnover within the finance and accounting department within the town. And although some key employees are still there that certainly are doing the job with other people that have brought in to supervise them, they're looking, I think, for people, not that it's not stable by any means, but probably are looking for people who's coming in with some new ideas and some different practices that can coalesce the group without wondering when the consultant, you know, might be leaving and what's going to happen then and, you know, some anxiety. Do you think you can cope with that, coming into a new environment with other people?
Yes. See, I have the ability. I'm able to get along with, you know, different people. I deal with a lot of different personalities, especially in a town like Concord where the expectations are up here. And like I said earlier, I benefited from starting in the treasury side where I dealt with customers, taxpayers. And that definitely, you know, dealing with taxpayers is different than dealing with, you know, department heads, coworkers. But being on the treasury side, that definitely prepared me. And I'm able to, I'm a team player. I'm able to work with people. I'm able to see things from their perspective. And, you know, our goal is the same. We're here to provide the best service we can to the residents. And I will always do whatever I can to, you know, to make that happen.
Okay. Thank you. I'm all set, sir.
All right, great. Just one, just since I noticed that Mr. Yucina left, the day that we were interviewing for George's position, we were looking at resumes for the position that Marie's being hired for. And something that Todd and Bill both said is they saw Town of Concord. And it, it sounds like they're a very prestigious finance department to work, to work in and one of those in the state that's kind of recognized as churning out kind of top talent. So seeing Marie work her way up, just even on paper, you know, to those, those that are familiar with the municipal side was, was very impressive.
Thank you.
And I think you'll like the commute a little better.
Yes, definitely.
So she, we asked her, I said, you didn't really drive from Central Falls to Concord, did you? She goes, no, no. She goes, she actually had, she was living in two locations. This will give an opportunity to live in one, which is, which is really big, really big for her, so.
I have to carry out, carry around two, three bags.
That's right. Excellent.
And, and what's the next step for us to now, Bill or Mike?
So you could go ahead and make a motion to, to go ahead and hire, and we can, we can sit down and, and work out a, an offer letter for Marie. And I think along the same timeline that we're talking about with George.
Tomorrow?
Yeah, tomorrow. And.
I don't think we have to wait as long for George. I mean, we're a little, for Marie, rather. We can, we can start with George.
Good point on that. So if we were to extend an offer, when would you be able to start?
So I would have to give my two weeks, Concord.
Okay. And Dave just brought up a good, great point. George, would you have any questions? You're going to be working with Maria for hopefully a long time.
No, actually, I met her upstairs in, I mean, we didn't have a lot of time to talk, but I, I, I think, I think we probably did it off very well. I, I tend to look at the accountant, the treasurer, the assessor, and that's not to leave anybody else out. But I look at that as the nucleus of the finances, and that's always the place where I, you know, I mean, usually it's all, I'd like, I should be, even with the recap sheets and what have you. I used to do my own recap and just put it up against the ESSs and check it out and if we all came down with the same thing. So there was checks and balances, everybody working together, and it kind of takes the heat off of one person, you know. I think it'll be, I think it'll work well.
One, one area that became clear to those of us, and I think you included, Mark, as we were interviewing, is that we pride ourselves as an organization that develops professionals. And we, we offer training. We encourage people to go to the training. We want to see them improve in the job, and we want to keep good people. And, and we met a number of candidates that applied for this position that were interested in that, in how we look and how we operate it. And, and it was very clear with Marie that, that she's the type of person who has self-developed but is also looking for growth from, from outside, you know, you know, from professional organizations for, she's, she's already got her bachelor's degree in, in accounting, but she's looking to further education. And so we, we feel at this point like we're, you know, we're as, as good for her as she is for us. I mean, we're an organization that offers a lot to folks that want to develop inside, and she's looking for that. I spent the last week talking with her coworkers, past and present, both bosses and, and coworkers. And, and the, the folks I talked to are very sad to see her leave, but they're not, they're not surprised. They expected her to be leaving because they, they know she's kind of at the top of where she's going where she is because there's already someone that's closer to her age in the next job above her. So it's, I got the impression that she's not leaving because she's dissatisfied or because they're running her out of town. She's looking to grow and develop just like the kind of people we're looking to hire. So we feel, or at least speaking for myself, like this is a good fit both ways. I think there's a lot to be gained for her coming to Foxborough and for us in bringing her to Foxborough.
Agreed.
Awesome. Make a motion to offer the position of director of accounting to Marie Anne Almodovar.
Almodovar. There's an accent.
I'll get to that in a second, by the way. But, but I would say conditional offer of employment because that's, that's what we typically do. And then, and then making sure that she covers all the, the background checks and all that stuff we have to do.
Okay, I'll second as amended.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? None?
Thank you. Appreciate that. And thank you to both of you for being here tonight. And thank you to the press for being here tonight because you're the only one here for being here today, so thank you. But Marie's also bilingual, which is another added advantage for the, for the community because as, as we've become a little more international in our, in our offices, because we have a couple of folks that have multilingual folks in the community, in the, in the offices now. So, so thank you for that. That's actually going to be another help to us because our community's becoming a little more diverse as well. And always good to be able to have that, that capability in the community. So it should be another plus.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Nothing else on the agenda? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.